Good afternoon, President Rice. I should be joined today, hopefully they were allowed on to the panel. My Chief Assistant Director, Ken Shapiro, the Assistant Director and Director for Social Services, Carrie Bowerman, and Assistant Director and Director for Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Dr. Jay Africa should be joining me. Hopefully they're on, but I'm going to go ahead and get started in the interest of time, and I'll show you my screen. Hopefully I can get it going here. Alright, so hopefully you can see my screen now. So, good afternoon, Board members and members of the public. I'm going to try to, in the interest of time, try to get, try to go through fairly quickly, and so we have time for if there are any questions. This is the agenda we're going to follow today. We'll talk about, a little bit about our budget work plan highlights. We'll talk about some of the things that we've done in response to supporting COVID-19, and then we'll talk very briefly about our overall efforts of incorporating our racial equity lens on our current operations. So, just a couple of things. Given the downturn in the economy and the impact on our state and local revenues, as previously mentioned by our Budget Director, we are expecting to take a bit of a reduction in the budget this year. But generally, our FY 2021 budget will be similar to last year. But one thing, it will be different, is that all of our budget, I really want to emphasize that all of our budget priorities for this year will be focused on supporting our vulnerable populations. And this is a result of our work and our observations. Because of COVID-19, we have readjusted all of our budget priorities to focus on vulnerable populations. And that goes from further implementation and commitment to rolling out our strategic plan for health and wellness equity, to continued support of the, continued support of the crisis and emergency response efforts, to completing our mandated work through partnerships and building and supporting our workforce through an equity focus, planning for our Mental Health Services Act new cycle of funding, using our whole person care infrastructure to support communities, expanding our mental health treatment, and implementing our suicide prevention plan and age-friendly plan. So, as you know, and you've already heard today, Health and Human Services is arguably, or not arguably, the most visible department through this pandemic response, as it's comprised of public health, social services, behavioral health, and adult and aging services. And to ensure our strategic direction on the Health and Human Services response to COVID-19, to include operationalizing and implementing policy direction from the EOC, we have developed a specialized unit known as the Health and Human Services Department Operations Center, or also called the Incident Command Team. And while, while we have been assuring essential services, this team has been providing coordination of communications, centralizing and disseminating Health and Human Services-specific information through the hub and through our regular Zoom meetings with staff, emailing communications regularly to our managers and supervisors, providing ongoing analysis, regular monitoring of key metrics to identify trends and gaps, recommending strategies to the EOC as applicable, or to HHS to address DSW or Disaster Service Worker Staffing, coordinating with the department leadership to support the Emergency Operations Center with Disaster Service Worker Assignments, while ensuring maintenance of essential services. We've been supporting as well the shelter in place and reopening by providing directional and ongoing implementation of transition work, of telework and reopening of Health and Human Services sites. And doing all this using the things that we've learned, including rapid deployment of technology, telehealth, and supporting remote delivery of services, including site coordination and facilitating our reopening in alignment with our EOC direction. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about our Public Health Department. A lot of the things you've already heard said through the EOC, the Public Health Department is the most, most visible department throughout this pandemic. They've been stellar in providing services to our community. They're on the forefront of identifying the virus coming into our community and notifying all of us. They've worked tirelessly, tirelessly in collaboration with our County Emergency Operations Center and our Public Information Office to ensure that information flows regularly and timely. Our Public Health Team had, would develop one of the state's first drive-through test sites, and they have set the way for other testing in the community to begin. Our Community Cold Disease Branch has been instrumental in providing support to COVID-19 positive patients and persons through contact investigation and identification of resources. Our Public Health Team works diligently with hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, long-term care facilities, and residential care facilities to ensure they have support and resources needed. And they've developed, as mentioned previously, the COVID-19 Call Center has been instrumental in providing information throughout the county. The other thing I want to mention that doesn't get a lot of attention is our Women's and Infants, Women, Infants, and Children's Program. It's just really stepped up to provide nutrition services to new mothers and babies throughout this COVID crisis. And on the Public Health side, I just want to identify some of the funding that we have received through our Public Health Department, because through COVID and the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, also known as CARES, has provided us with about $37,000 in new provider relief funds. The Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act has provided funds to support public health preparedness through about $516,000 in new funds received to direct high-priority response needs, including help mitigating demands on our healthcare system. The COVID-19 Emergency Response Grant, which was, was provided to County Medical Services Act Counties, CMSP Counties such as ours, in addressing the needs of low-income populations. And we've received about $700,000 to do contact investigation in low-income communities. And as well as the CDC has provided funding for detection of testing individuals with mild, mild cases of COVID, and that's about $47,000 in new funds to participate in this surveillance project. Next, I'm going to turn it over to our Director for Social Services, Carrie Bowerman, who's going to give you a quick update on the Social Services support to COVID-19.
Thank you, Benita. Good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to spotlight the work that Social Services has been doing over these last few months. I'll start with Aging and Adult Services. Almost 30% of the Marin County population is age 60 or older, and we know that older adults have been one population most negatively impacted by the virus. Lee Pollan and the team at Aging and Adult Services have done a tremendous job, working hard to meet the needs of the community. I'm just going to highlight a few things, which is just a sliver of the hard work being done by that team. Our 457 Information and Assistance Line, 457 INFO, saw a dramatic increase in calls in April and May, 237% increase in April and 229% increase in May, compared to last year at the same time period. We were also able to utilize $100,000 of Families First funding to offer grants of $500 per person for people aged 60 and over who were experiencing economic hardship. And we partnered with various community-based organizations, MCIL, CAM, and Canal Alliance to distribute those funds. The IHSS staff reached out to 1,900 program recipients of that program to ensure that they had ongoing access to their caregivers and to other resources that they needed. And I also want to mention the work of our Ombudsman Office, very critical during this time, doing support and advocacy and reaching out to patients of nursing homes who we know have been extremely vulnerable during this time period. Moving to Children-Family Services, we noticed in the last two weeks of March that our referrals of abuse and neglect were dramatically down, and we attributed that to the fact that schools were closed, and through distance learning, it was much more difficult for teachers, who are the majority of our mandated reporters, to identify abuse and neglect. So, we were extremely concerned by that. April was Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and we had a variety of in-person events that we were unfortunately unable to do due to COVID, but Bree Marchman and her team worked with the Public Information Officer and did a press release, and we got a lot of traction through that press release, and were able to do some media stories. Bree was on KTVU and some, some press and radio stories. And as a result of that, we saw an uptick in our referrals because of the outreach. So, where we stand now, we are still at about half of our typical volume. We're starting to see it increase a little bit during the phased reopenings, but we're going to continue to keep an eye on that. Next slide, please. Something that I've been involved in personally over these last few months is work around food distribution. I convened a large group of county and community partners, and I appointed five food liaisons representing Marin City, West Marin, the Canal, San Rafael, and Nobato. And together, we've been working really hard in partnership to get food. This is also a good partnership with the Food Bank, Marin SF Food Bank. So, there, there are so many different food distribution sites around Marin, and we've been staffing many of them with county disaster service workers. I just want to quickly highlight two programs that, that we worked on together in partnership. One of them was our Grocery Bag Delivery Program, and the initial money for that was the $100,000 that was allocated by your board for food distribution. And we were able to serve 340 older adults, age 65 and older, over a 10-week period with 2,300 bags of food delivered directly to their homes so that they didn't have to go to the grocery store and put themselves at risk. We also administered the Great Plates Meal Delivery Program. This was a state program, mostly funded by FEMA. It ran for about a month here in Marin County, and we served 725 people, 65 and older, or with chronic conditions. And we served 23,752 restaurant meals. So, that's breakfast, lunch, and dinner, delivered to people's homes from a restaurant of their choosing. And the wonderful thing about that program, it also provided the local restaurants with close to $539,000 of revenue and enabled them to provide their staff with gainful employment during that time period and bring back many of their staff from, from furlough. Next slide, please. Moving to our Public Assistance Program, you'll recall that we came to your board in March, and we requested a waiver of certain general relief requirements. And that was a desire to get funding of general relief to those in dire financial need. And that's been extremely helpful, not having to do the face-to-face interviews and not having to have work requirements. It's, it's been really helpful to, to those vulnerable populations. And surprisingly, the general relief population has decreased over this time period. It's decreased statewide as well. And we think that is possibly because there are many more resources available to this population that aren't typically available, such as hotel rooms and, and meals, that sort of thing. So, while we've seen a decrease in general relief, our other public assistance programs have seen an extraordinary uptick. You can see the percentages there. I want to really call out our CalFresh program in the month of April, which experienced a 332% increase in applications compared to last year during the same time period. So, even though that presents a huge workload impact to the staff, we're thrilled that people in the community are taking advantage of this important resource. And we also know that CalFresh is a way to get money immediately back into the economy, stimulating the economy, because those dollars get, get spent immediately. I want to really thank Jessie Perrin and her team. 120 North Redwood has been open for business throughout this event. We've been conducting most of our services remotely, but for those who cannot access, access services remotely, we've been distributing EBT cards, you know, and, and helping people with applications if they're unable to do so by phone or online. We have our Remote Call Center, which has been extremely successful. Call wait times have been above what we would like to see, but that's largely because we're expediting our services. And if there's no need for income verifications, we're having a one-and-done approach and really trying to get people to walk away with benefits after that initial call. Next slide, please. So, I want to end with unemployment in Marin. This has also been dramatic. Pre-COVID, we were at 2% unemployment rate, and it shot up to 11.2% in the month of April. It's slightly down now in May, as things have started to reopen, but I'm still very dramatic. The bulk of those jobs were lost in the leisure and hospitality industries. So, we've had 34,000 people in Marin apply for unemployment insurance. So, we're really pleased that our Career Point Marin has reopened as of June 15, and Paula Glodowski and her team are working extremely hard to serve people both in job search as well as accessing unemployment insurance. And I'll just end there. I just want to say I'm really heartened by the speakers who are asking for an increased Social Services presence and involvement in, in our community. I think we, we're doing a lot of good work, but we could certainly do a lot more. And at this point, I will turn it over to Ken Shapiro, who's going to discuss Whole Person Care.
Thank you very much, Carrie, and President Rice, and Board of Supervisors. I'll go quickly, we have a lot of slides and a lot of presenters. The Whole Person Care Team turned on a dime to help lead the care and shelter work for the county when COVID hit. For isolation and quarantine, this includes creating safe shelter options for those who are COVID-positive, and developing care coordination protocols and cross-organizational teams with our community partners, including the hospitals. Much of the infrastructure that was developed under Whole Person Care over the past couple of years has been crucial to our response to COVID. The response for those experiencing homelessness has been swift, and many departments from across the county have pitched in to ensure we're able to help those most vulnerable to COVID to safely isolate in motel rooms. As you can see from the slide, we've increased shelter capacity by approximately 65% in response to COVID. This includes sheltering, we believe, every homeless family in the county at the moment. Community partners and county staff are working hard now to attempt to find permanent housing options for these clients. I just want to say thank you very quickly to all the county employees, especially our BHRS colleagues who stepped up during this most especially difficult time, when we expanded shelter capacity by 65%. In the county before this, upgraded, no shelter beds. It was quite a shift for us. Most especially, I want to thank Latoya Webb and Lili Thomas, who've been leading this effort. They've both been there from day one and have really been crucial. Going on to the Whole Person Care. In March, the state announced the delay of CalAim, which I think all of you are aware of, and the outlook therefore for Whole Person Care funding after December remains unknown at this time. It's still a debate between the state and the federal government about what the next version of the 1115 waiver looks like. That's the funding for Whole Person Care. That's the bad news, is that we're not really sure what things look like come January, but the good news is that the team has managed to secure enough funding to ensure housing case management for those currently enrolled in housing case management all the way through the end of 2022. So, that's some, some very good new news that I'm happy to deliver to you. And some of those bullets under Whole Person Care will contribute to our ability to make sure that those currently in housing case management can stay in housing case management. And this, lastly, I'll highlight the Rental Assistance Program. The partnership between your board and Rain Community Foundation receives an overwhelming response, and the organizations, many of them, I think five nonprofits across Marin County, those involved in that program will be getting checks out the door to 300 additional households over the next couple of weeks. And that will be the remainder of those funds that we have to distribute for rental assistance. Taking the village of our community partners, and I want to quickly thank all of them for their quick work to scan up this and execute this program so quickly. And with that, I'll pass it on to Dr. Africa.
Thank you, Ken, and Supervisors, for the opportunity to just highlight what we've done to respond to COVID. I am really grateful for the Behavioral Health and Recovery staff that had stepped up in addition to ongoing continuing to care for their own clients and the families that they work with. Sort of just a snapshot. In terms of our mental health services, we actually saw an overall increase comparing from March to June of some of our services, comparing it from 2019. And even if people were not coming in, the demand, you know, sort of increased enough for us to rethink about how to prepare and continue providing the services. We noticed a 27% increase in the number of calls with our Suicide Prevention Hotline through our partnership with Buckaloo, our partnership with Community Action Marin. We saw an increase of calls requesting information, needing somebody to talk to for about 33%. And then overall, in our data, saw many of our programs really enhancing their care coordination services. So, even if our staff were not necessarily seeing our clients on the field, many of our staff were really trying to care, coordinate their services, employment, clinical services, questions about point-of-testing, all of those things during sort of this pandemic. Significantly, we, we also saw in substance abuse a decrease in sort of case management services for SUD, but it was interesting enough that we actually saw a little bit of increase in clients seeking residential services and detox services in this last couple of months. So, it talks about, again, probably the behavioral health need of folks who are being isolated and perhaps using, really needing some additional support when they are not able to, to get service services face-to-face. One of the things that we have pushed for, I know that we're mostly focused on sort of the pandemic. As you all know, that we were the first county that developed a suicide prevention strategic plan, and we have slowly moved forward by hiring the first-ever Suicide Prevention Coordinator. We are grateful that there has not been sort of a spike on people who have died by suicide here, but we are sort of seeing, actually nationally and also statewide, that there had been increases in some of our county partners or other counties in terms of suicide. The one thing that we are very excited about is really, even with the pandemic, we were asked to help facilitate some conversations regarding mental health and wellness in the community. We facilitated that and helped some, many of our partner agencies and also non-part, traditionally, non-partner agencies on what to think about as they are helping their staff or the people that they work with to take care of themselves and ensure that they are grounded, not just in sort of the work, but really ensuring that they take care of themselves because they can't be good in helping others if they don't feel well themselves. Next slide. So, some of the highlights, and Benita had mentioned this already, we have been thinking about doing telehealth for a long time, but the COVID really created sort of an opportunity to swiftly move towards telehealth. And when we talk about telehealth, providing supports via telephone and/or video. So, we realized that not everybody has the capability and to switch to video because of the kinds of phones that they have, or not having internet access. And so, we really created, continued still to provide most of our services through telephone. We were grateful to hear that there were some funding opportunities through CARESAC, and so we actually submitted sort of our, some funding requests to help purchase some of the telehealth equipment. And FISCAL was really a, a very helpful partner there. Just sort of focusing on our Latinx population, we transitioned our Spanish-speaking parenting group to virtual meetings. It was sort of interesting in the beginning, the, actually, the Spanish group didn't want to do that, but we really felt it was important for us to give them resources, not just about behavioral health, but really about testing and why it was important and needing information and providing coverings for the, for their face and also washing their hands. So, I'm grateful to Maria Araujo did that. We partnered with Cuerpo Corazon Comunidad, which is our Spanish radio providing COVID-19-related information. We actually had staff that were weekly guests in that radio show to talk about just behavioral health and substance abuse resources, but again, aligning the resources in terms of employment, sheltering in place, telling them about the 7191 numbers, and really emphasizing why it was important for them to, to communicate to us, to relate, to reach out to not only behavioral health, but HHS. Towards, in the middle, maybe I would say April, we noticed that the warm line was mostly really just answering English phone calls. And so, we really worked with Community Action Marin to create Spanish-speaking peer warm line. And it was so important for us and to, to really have that resource for Latinx population, and that's continuing to sort of happen every afternoon. We also used some of our monies to pay for sober living environments for COVID-19-related unemployment. So, really trying to be responsible and responsive to the current needs of our communities in helping them remain housed during this pandemic. And I will not sort of emphasize that, but our mobile, as you probably know, our Mobile Crisis, our Crisis Stabilization Unit, our access, and our medical providers continued to operate as business as usual. We, in the beginning, saw sort of a dip of the services there, but has been really picking up in terms of responding in the community. And I do, as Carrie had said, I'm heartened to hear that the community is really interested in supporting behavioral health and providing more services, because I think I have talked about the emerging, if not already here, the emerging behavioral health needs that many of our community members, many of our folks here are already facing and needing some support. I am really, really grateful for our staff that, in BHRS, that had really stepped up, and 42% of our BHRS staff had actually stepped up as DSW workers, and half of those 42% were staffing the motels through our Project Roomkey. Again, these are just some of the highlights that we, we want to share with you, but our BHRS are really ongoing heroes and to this work, and I'm grateful to be part of, of this organization. Want to turn it on to Benita?
So, thank you, Dr. Africa, and thank you all the executives for Health and Human Services. I'm just going to close out by reminding the Board members about our work in Health and Human Services to incorporate a racial equity lens into our current operations. As I gave the presentation last week at the board, I just wanted to remind everyone that we started our work back in 2018 with our HHS Strategic Plan to Achieve Health and Wellness Equity Leading with Race. We have established some action priorities in last December, and then we're also moving forward with our Equity Capacity Building in Health and Human Services. Here is our, the basic pieces of our strategic plan that shows that we want people to receive the right services when and where they need them. We want Health and Human Services to be more responsive to communities. We want policies and systems and environments that are more, that are more just, and we want programs and services that are more effective. And here are priorities that we have started working on in this year. We've already started working on some of these priorities, and our plan is to, to enact all of these priorities in fiscal year 2021. And then finally, our Equity Capacity Building within Health and Human Services, along with our Health, our County Equity Director, Anya Nia Muse, will be moving forward on these things that she already mentioned in terms of some internal work that we want to do as we also prepare to do our external, external work with the community. Our ultimate goal is to make sure that we have equity strength to bring positive change to our entire community. And with that, I think my time is up. I really wanted to make sure to thank all the residents of Marin County. I really appreciate it, as our other speakers today have mentioned, the comments of the, of the public today. I, I listened to all, every one of the comments. I made notes on the hundreds of people who commented today and definitely gave and definitely gave additional food for thought as we move forward with our work in supporting the County of Marin. So I want to thank all the residents, active and inactive, in their interest in what we want to do here in Marin County. I want to thank all the Health and Human Services Department staff. I especially want to thank administration staff, including the folks that have been working on Incident Command Team throughout COVID. The fiscal team, who has done a tremendous, tremendous job in making sure that we can move forward with the needs of our community and so that we can have a really good understanding of our fiscal situation. They have been just stalwart throughout this COVID and just very actively involved. So thank you to the fiscal team. Our technology team, we couldn't have done all the things in terms of working telework or telehealth without our technology team, tremendous work. And as well as our human services, excuse me, human resources team, who have continued to support us in a multitude of ways. The Public Health Department, it goes without saying, they are just the heroes. In my opinion of COVID-19, they've done tremendous, tremendous efforts in so many different ways. Social Services as well, great heroes, as well as Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, all folks who are really doing what the real work of that frontline work. All heroes doing great work to support our community and keeping them safe and well. I want to thank all our community-based organizations and partners that have been working with us, the County Administrator's Office, all our Emergency Operations Center partners and staff, and all the county departments that have been with us throughout this COVID event, and will go on beyond. So that concludes my presentation for today. Thank you.